All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, regular meeting for April 4th, 2023. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Demato?
Absolutely. Happy to.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation in her own, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. And with that, I'm gonna move you down one.
What's that?
I said with that, I'm gonna change the order by wanting to move you down because they've got a check.
Why?
You don't.
That's what I was here for, a big check.
So with that, we will have a presentation from the Greater Clarksburg 10-K.
Thanks, Gary. My name's John Ebert, and I'm one of the chairmen of the 10-K. But before we actually make the check presentation, just want to mention we're having our 27th race this year on June 17th. So love to have you guys out there. Some brochures in the back. I see some runners here or people who have been walking on the track. And Tom's definitely gonna get you out there as well. So if you don't want to do the 10-K, we certainly have the two-miler, and we, you guys are too old for the kids K, but it's a lot of fun, and it's been a great event for downtown Clarksburg. So let me turn it over to Carl and Steve. We have a check presentation to Pam and Julie.
Come on up.
Hi.
Hey, Pam. Good seeing you.
Julie Solomon.
Nice seeing you.
Okay.
It's with a great honor that I represent the Greater Clarksburg Race Committee, and we are honored to be able to introduce a check to a much-needed program here headed by a wonderful person, Pam Hudson-Philt.
It humbles me to hear he says headed by me. Man, we had 33 participants today. Not participants, 33 people in the room, counting the children that were there for this session. And the volunteers are just amazing. I get worried, and someone will walk up and say, hey, you need any help tomorrow? And I'm like, oh, I was gonna beg on Facebook. Thank you. So it's, that's all I do, is I make some phone calls.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Julie is the social worker extraordinaire. I'm gonna tell you something, the grandparents love her. She creates a rapport with them quite easily and finds out what it is they need. They talk with her, and then, you know, it's amazing. Back at Christmas, we spent some money, and the next thing we knew, we had more than that donated back to us. We spent some money this week, and this almost covers all of that money we spent. And we still have a whole bunch of money that the Bridgeport Junior Women's Club gave us last year from the gala, so we can just keep on helping. I said we take care of everything from pacifiers to graduation caps and gowns. Do not let these grandparents worry while they're trying to, you know, do this wonderful service that they're performing for our society. Those kids are in loving, warm homes. They're not in institutions, foster homes. They're good foster homes, nothing like family home. Julie, anything? Nope. Said it all.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Dora asked if we wanted to go down there, and I said no, Pam could handle it.
You gotta remind me. If it's not written on my palm of my hand, I don't get it done.
Thank you. All right, with that brings us down to our next item, which is Matt Demato and the Bridgeport High School LSIC.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and considering what we're asking for. With me, I have our president, the LSIC, Suzanne Randolph is here. Y'all know that our assistant principal, Renee Matthews. J.D. Lister is one of our outstanding Advanced Placement teachers at Bridgeport. You may or may not know, the weighting of dual-credit college courses is changing with the class of 2024. You may and probably do know that Advanced Placement courses have been weighted at one point higher than a regular course that you could take in regular. AP Chemistry is weighted one point higher for GPA purposes than regular chemistry. Starting with next year's class, they're going to weigh, state is weighing, it's a requirement to weigh the dual-credit college courses with the same weighting. We fear that this is going to impact what we've experienced as great success at Bridgeport for our AP classes and for our AP students. One-third of our 10th graders, juniors, and seniors are taking at least one Advanced Placement course. What we have observed and what I've observed for 17 years is that these courses provide a great deal of rigor, their structure, it's an international standard. You can get a college credit with it, but you have to pass a standard, an international standard, you have to pass the test. So there's no guarantee of that college credit. With dual-credit, you've got to pass the class. If you pass the class, you're gonna get the credit. Now, we're supposed to treat those the same as far as grade-point-average weighting, and we feel that that, we feel they're not the same. To borrow an analogy, there's a reason why if you make one behind the three-point arc, it's three points. There's a reason why if you lay it off the glass, it's two. It's more difficult. That's been our experience. Now, what I'm saying here is not intended to cast anything negative toward any one person or any class anywhere or to any institution. The fact is, we value our dual-credit college class, our college algebra trig that we have in our high school. I know that dual-credit college classes in other high schools are valued, and we have the opportunity to supervise those classes. Okay, they're in our building. We've got control with those courses. We, again, are concerned that our numbers are going to decline. If you're gonna treat the dual-credit the same, and again, I'm not gonna mention classes, you're gonna treat a dual-credit the same as AP Calculus, then I'm afraid students and parents will look only at the GPA and drift more toward taking the dual-credit and away from what we've experienced to be the more rigorous offerings. We did a survey of our 11th graders. Did any of y'all see this?
Uh huh.
Okay. And if I can go down through it, number one, this is for 11th graders. Would you take an AP course weighted 1.5 points over for GPA calculations or take a dual-credit weighted one point over? And 73 chose the AP course, 45 chose the dual-credit. Number two, have you taken or are you taking AP courses? 80 said yes, 35 said no. Of those 80, do you believe that the AP course you have taken or are taking has better prepared you for future endeavors? 66 said yes, 14 said no. These are juniors. For our seniors, would you take an AP course weighted 1.5 points over for GPA calculations or take a dual-credit weighted one point over for GPA calculations? And then we had an example, if you read it, it says, for example, but the chart didn't come up. We just compared regular courses to a dual-credit to an AP weighted 1.5 additional points. And 64 said the AP course, 55 said the dual-credit. Number two, if dual-credit courses and AP classes were to be weighted the same, one point over GPA calculations, which type of course would you take? And this is disturbing data. 42 said AP, 78 said dual-credit. I'm not trying to cast anything negative toward the institution, person, class, anywhere. I'm trying to support what we've experienced to be very successful for us, and I think successful throughout the state. And I say that because I've been on the college tour recently. I've gone as far south as University of Georgia, through Clemson, Tennessee, WU, and Penn State. If you're a West Virginia student, getting into WU isn't that difficult, and I'm not casting anything negative toward WU. My oldest son will be graduating from WU in a few months, in a few weeks. But I will tell you, being on that tour made it very clear to me that those institutions look at the rigor. Are you taking a rigorous course load? And they're looking at two things, IB, International Back of the Art, which we do not have, or AP Advanced Placement. If you want to get into a University of Georgia, a Clemson, a Penn State, you're gonna need to take a rigorous course load. They're more concerned about that than they are the GPA, because a lot of places aren't even looking at weighted GPAs anymore, for example. Number three, have you taken an AP course and dual-credit course off campus? The answer is yes, 58 said yes, and 62 said no. Which courses do you believe are setting you up for success in your future endeavors? 34 said AP, 24 said dual-credit. Which course was more academically challenging? 50 said AP and eight said dual-credit. These are the players. If you want to find out who the best kids are on a little league team, ask the kids. They're better at picking the team than the adults, because they know who the fastest is, who can throw the hardest. Our students who have experience in dual-credit and in Advanced Placement, they know. This is their data. Do you have any questions for me? We're asking that you waive the rule, essentially. I know you've seen the documentation, we can look at that. We're asking to be able to weigh Advanced Placement courses here in Harrison County, 1.5 points higher than a regular course, and it would make it a half point higher than a dual-credit college. The dual-credit college student almost certainly has that credit guaranteed. The AP student doesn't. Where is their carrot? What do they get? How are they being rewarded? I will say they're being rewarded because they're being more challenged, they're taking a more rigorous course, but they want, they're gonna want to know, how are we being rewarded with regard to the college credit and the GPA? Well, college credit, you gotta pass that international standard. So how can we help them with the weighting? And that's what I'm asking this board to do, is to approve this waiver. We send it off to Charleston, and hopefully it's accepted and we put it in our policy. Any questions?
What exactly, when you're saying more rigorous, can you explain the difference or Mrs. Matthews or Mr. Lister, is there a difference in the actual course that they are taking, AP as opposed to college?
I invite you all to come up and do that. I'll throw in my two cents, and I'm sure that you've got, you know, you've got $2 compared to my two cents. But you're in the arena teaching.
I only ask them because I know they teach.
No worries, that's not a problem. But, for example, right now, the student who's taking a dual-credit off-campus is doing it, they're not doing it in the classroom necessarily. Our AP students are showing up every day. Those that are doing it off-campus, they're doing it electronically, and I will tell you, and I've spoken to them, they'll take the test and keep taking it in one particular class until they get the grade they want. That's not rigor.
I think it comes down to quality control. You have quality control on your AP.
I think that's definitely part of it, 100%, yes. But that right there, to me, is an example of rigor, one where we do have the control. But there are standards, and I'm gonna let you, J.D., you wanna talk about the standards that you have to live up to, the training?
Yeah, so obviously, like Mr. Demato said, we're not taking anything away from any institution, any professor, any teacher who is putting in the time with our students, but college board programs are designed to where you teach them, you have to go to training, and it's not just a one-time thing. Every three years, we're going throughout the state during the summer for a week to go through pretty rigorous training. I mean, we're in the classroom all day honing our craft in what we do. More importantly, the college board has a set of standards to teach these classes. It has a set of content standards that must be covered. For example, I teach Advanced Placements, U.S. Government Politics, as well as AP Psychology. And in AP Psychology, we have what used to be 14 is now the same stuff, but in nine units of information for AP Psychology that the students must be prepared for for the exam. You'll find that the AP Psychology course is way more rigorous in the amount of work that needs to be done than most college psychology courses are, your 101s and 102s. I have had many students who have gone on to psychology degrees come back and tell me. I had a student just a few months ago who was taking a developmental psychology course in college, strictly about developmental psychology. I do it in one unit. She said there was nothing we came across in your course that was new in college. Everything had been talked about. We have to plan these courses out. Of course, we have some academic freedom in there to set it up how we want to, but we make sure that those students have to work and continuously keep up with hitting those standards. Because if I just decide, wow, we didn't get to a unit, well, there's something they're not prepared for for the exam, whereas the college courses, there's no guarantee they're gonna get through all that material. And again, like, you know, I think you mentioned, Mr. Hammer, you said quality control. We're there with them every day. My courses are alternating 90-minute block all year long, every other day. They work for me for an entire year, whereas in the college course, it's one semester, maybe sometimes, you know, three course hours a week, where they're getting much more with ours. And I know how hard our Advanced Placement teachers work, and I think that this weighing of the courses equally is not fair to our teachers across the county and across the state who have put in this work and will drastically see their numbers decline. I see every year 80 to 100 AP students through my two courses, and I think those numbers would drastically be cut with this. So any other questions on the requirements or rigor that I could answer for you guys or attempt to?
My thing is, it's what Mr. Demato said, and it comes down even when I hire employees, and you have maybe an online course and someone who went to college. Part of that is that for four years, they went somewhere and sat in a classroom and took the time, and it's a different mindset, and it's not to despair of the online courses. But I think that's, I may have a different opinion on this, the weighted grades, because we've had this debate since I've been on the board between AP and dual-credit. And I think I'm a little bit different now, and I support it. I support what you're asking. Because of that, I think with the advent of more online courses, I think the rigor is better if you're in the classroom. You have the quality of control. They're setting, it's a big difference than someone who's setting it at a computer and can log on and off five times, six times throughout the day and get it as they can.
Again, look at their notes while they're taking.
Exactly. So I'm with you where five, six years ago, I wouldn't have been with you, so.
And I want to reemphasize that this is not cutting on anything, anyone in particular. We're not directing it at the schools like Bridgeport that have dual-credit in-house. We're not casting anything negative toward that. We do oversee that. We have some control, as you were saying. Anything else?
We've had a saying over the last couple of years, we need students in seats.
Yes.
This puts our students in the seats where they really belong.
To do otherwise is to encourage the opposite. We need to find ways to get students in seats. This is one way, and I'm glad you brought that up. This is one way to support it with our AP courses. What's gonna happen if we do lose those numbers? Eventually, we're gonna have AP courses with six students, seven students, what if we have four or five classes like that? Are we gonna get more teachers to pick up the load? Because if we don't, then we're gonna have to get rid of those courses. And now we're, now we are lowering standards, in our view.
And the other thing I've asked, so it will be weighted, were you saying at one and a half? But still, they are still getting a, I mean, the dual-credit are still getting a grade.
The dual-credit will get weighed one above.
Right. So it's not like you're cutting that out completely.
And if they pass the class, they get a college credit.
Right.
Okay? I will say, that's a lower bar than having to take an international standard exam. And if you do not get the mark, you don't get the credit. That's AP. So we've got, if we don't find a way to reward the effort of those students, we will lose numbers. The surveys show that.
Did you say you had 12 or 13 AP courses?
We have 14.
14 total.
And next year, we'll have one more, sorry. Next year, we should have one more, AP Music Theory should be back.
When does the waiver need to be sent?
Well, generally, we didn't put it on at this point.
That's what I'm saying.
We want our action.
I mean, we're not up against.
I would say.
So you just need it in place for next year.
So we do, which means it needs to be in our Harris County policy.
And it needs to go to the state board for approval.
Right, so I'm saying, it's not on there as an action item because it's a presentation, but if I just ask superintendent to add it to the next agenda, and then.
Then we'll send it down for the state board agenda. We did check to see if there was anything in this new state policy that would say that they would not take a waiver. They will accept a waiver, but they'll still have to take action on it. If there's not anything that says that you can.
Well, I can tell you with some of the transcripts we receive from other high schools in the state, we're receiving transcripts where honors are weighted the same as AP and honors scores. So we know that, I'm assuming they got a waiver to do that. Maybe they're just doing it. But when we receive, when we receive a transcript, a student transfer is in, we've had students come in, it's not just us, other schools everywhere with like a 4.6, 4.7, and you look at the transcript, and there's maybe a dozen honors classes weighted one point above a regular course. Honors class, not, no real standard, what makes an honors class an honors class? What are the standards for them?
And we've had kids come in with a 1.5 on the AP weighted from Pennsylvania to us.
Correct.
So when we had to redo their transcript, they did have a 1.5 coming in from Pittsburgh area to us. That kind of gave us this idea, we've been brainstorming this wall that we're gonna be putting against.
And we have to take that 1.5 that they came in with and make it a one, the same as we have to take an honors weighted one and weigh it the same as a regular class. And can you imagine how upset students and parents would be if we didn't do that? Somebody comes in and they're easily number one in their class by a wide margin and didn't take a single AP course.
Mrs. Stelt.
You have a student from another state county that lives in, and they've taken an AP course there, and they've been weighted with one point. Would you increase that to 0.5?
If Harrison County's policy dictated such, we have to.
Then you would do that.
Yeah, we would. We'd have to do it, if it's in our policy.
I was just gonna say, so everybody understands that, maybe that's listening or whatever, this waiver would be for all the high schools in the county.
It has to be for all high schools.
Absolutely.
It will be, we can, if we vote on this at the 18th meeting, if you take action and you decide to vote, we can get it on that first December state board meeting. That's as quick as you could get it on. We'll have to send it down, we have it added to there.
On the.
You said December.
For the, for the May. For the May.
I was gonna say, for the, sorry about that. For the May.
Yeah.
I'm not good with ones either, it's, sorry.
That's why you looked at me funny, for that maybe. So, okay.
So we'll add it to the next.
Um, can I?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It's not so much about rigor, but since this does have to go again on an agenda, and I think definitely part of our point is the face-to-face, definitely being in school, being face-to-face with our students. I think maybe there might be a caveat that needs to be added, that it should not be virtual AP courses, because those do exist in the West Virginia Virtual School catalog. I think it should be on-campus AP courses. If we're, if that's the route that we're going, because we're expecting them to be more rigorous face-to-face.
And I think that's why we would have to look at that to make sure that that's.
Yeah, I don't know, but I just wanted to bring that up as.
Because we don't wanna do that, and then the state school boards, who may be pushing virtual AP.
Right.
Kill us all because of that.
Right.
I'm with you, but just want to make sure that, because they may be put, state board may be pushing it because of that. If you leave that off, they may decline your waiver, so we'll just have to do some research.
I just want to make sure that if we're thinking the face-to-face, it's better, so.
So, okay.
We good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Easter.
Thank you.
That moves us down to item four, delegations. Do we have any delegations? No delegations, superintendent's update, Miss Stelt.
Sure, I have a few things. I think Mr. Lopez has some facilities updates. Got a lot going on.
Yeah, just real quick, we have opened up bids for both the CRCC and also the Bridgeport Middle School. The load there looks to be over $1 million for both of those projects. They're coming in a lot lower than we thought. And that's good for the overall scope of all these projects, because that's just, as we move down the list, the more money you save, the more that we could, you know, do with other projects. It extends some projects, maybe instead of only doing part of them, be able to do all of them.
It's kind of a double whopper, too, if they're coming in low, so I hope they'll all continue that way.
That is true, and hopefully no big change orders. But anytime you get into these projects, you are kind of running into a few things. One is electrical upgrades. We already need to do an electrical upgrade to Simpson. We don't have to, we're grandfathered in, however, it's gonna cost around $50,000, and it hasn't been approved yet, but the power line lies very low and close to the roof. And there's, that is a safety issue, we really need to look forward to that. But I'll bring these to you at the next meeting with the numbers, and you guys can approve.
Who's working on projects?
Uh, certainly.
Certainly.
Yeah, significantly, the load is better. Yes, both projects.
Interesting.
The other thing is Adamson Elementary School, there's a sign out in the yard, Coffins is gonna be auctioning those. It's gonna be sold to the highest bidder, and that is gonna be online from April 26th to May 3rd. And the, the both houses at the schools, those will be, we're working on finding the titles, because those aren't real estate titles, so we're getting the titles, and then those will be sold, and it may be, they may be sold close at the same time to the highest bidder. And I believe that's.
What was the amount for the contents at Adamson? I cannot remember that option.
But I think it was.
What's about what that was?
Maybe 12,000.
I had 12 in mine.
Yeah, okay. And then we ended up doing a lot better at Lincoln, and I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000.
Did it clear out a?
The contents.
Right, I'm less concerned about the, because that's, it's old stuff, and you don't want to go get a certain amount, but I want to make sure that we got a majority of the stuff out, so we don't have to move.
That is correct.
And that's the cost.
Well, when we sell it, we'll sell it.
With everything.
As is with the content. We were thinking about.
Yeah, we don't want to.
Because maintenance.
Yeah, we, it takes weeks.
Yeah.
The 26.
Yeah. Also, the Meat Lab over in South Harrison that we've been working on, it is, we actually installed the freezer unit today.
Okay, I knew it was gonna be.
Yeah, and they're also, we're just waiting for the electrical upgrade to be brought in, and that will be fully functional for next year's courses. And our maintenance department worked and has done, you know, I gotta give him kudos because he took on a very large project, and for a small number of people, they have done an excellent job, probably extended himself out there a little bit on that. We like, they liked Danny really good about trying to do things for all the schools. He listens well to the principals, and I think that he's learned the balance there because if we do everything that they want, we won't have enough people to do preventative maintenance and things like that in the school. And I only say that because sometimes we have to say, not right now. So, but I think that overall, that project is really a, you know, state-of-the-art. We were gonna have a lot of that contracted out, and it would cost them a whole lot more money, and I don't think the end product would have been near as good. I think when it gets operational, I think it'd be great for you all to get out and see it, that students will be.
The teachers there have reached out, they want to do ribbon cutting and.
That's awesome.
Have a little ceremony there, so.
It's really a big deal, and it's a nice program for that area. Too bad we don't have it at all of our schools. It definitely is, there's a group of kids that would love to be a part of that. I'm sure the next thing is people, schools are gonna be reaching out to send their kids. So create a good thing, and then just want to create, trying to figure out how to get a bus.
Transportation.
I know they call for that.
That's right.
We do, too.
That's what you're looking ahead, right?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, I understand. But overall, I don't have any other really things to add.
What about, are we doing any, uh, party lots?
Since you brought that up, Mr. Odom, we have looked at, I know we did some last year, you know. We did.
Talk with the board.
So. And I have it right here. We just did get an estimate, and Danny probably shared that with Dore.
He did, yeah.
He was excited.
And so, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of. And so, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000, and that is to do, uh, four paving, it's pretty bad, to do some of West Milford, to do paving. The parking lot at Lumberport Elementary School, Tom, you worked there, so you probably, that little parking lot is not necessarily connected, so we're going to do some signage, paint that, and it's long on to do, and then put in, you know, the parking pylon, so that it'll organize the parking a little bit, because that's, that's kind of an issue in the neighborhood.
Is it grabbed one out?
It's grabbed, yeah, and we, we bought a house, tore it down, rattle it, and so that is, so then we're also going to do some resurfacing, and that would be to Lincoln Mill, I believe Liberty, and one other area, so we're trying to, we're trying to do that every year. And, and like I said, we'll have to get that in a budget, and it still costs around $700, big amount. The big amount is we're, we put a light in, we're putting a light in, in the back, and we're going to repaint that back area, you really remember.
That's been on a request for several years, probably even...
That's quite a bit of progress.
It really is, it really is, and again, that's a cost, that's a cost estimate, they can bid it out and they come in with a lot of...
That's good. Mr. Lopez, this is off, but has something to do with facilities. I was asked about a school that uses the field for track and field, and high school, and the middle school uses it, but they had some concerns about the track, maybe not being able to have meats there because of the surface of it, and also, one other issue was the sand, they needed sand, is there any help there of any kind for these folks, or?
Well, the sand, I think we can help with, get it delivered, if we know where they want to buy it, and usually the schools will go together and hash that out between the two of them, the facility money, levy money.
Right.
Now, as far as resurfacing the track, a track, that's always a very big undertaking, very expensive, and usually they use their, their facility money fundraising, and sometimes they, they could do some, you know, come to the board and come to the board and request some assistance from the board on a large project.
Have we had any repairing those? Probably not, I think you just have to resurface.
Well, you can repair, but some of them are beyond being repaired, you'd get into with work.
And you'd have liability if someone got hurt because of that.
So it's a matter really of the two principles, first of all, getting together.
We make it a priority, identifying that as a project, that they would like to present as a budget request.
Is it at Lincoln?
Where's it said?
It's at Lincoln.
Yeah.
But is that track not new, or when, we didn't, we didn't do that when we, when they did football?
That, that track has not been presented for quite a second.
Is it rubber track?
It is rubberized, and it wasn't in good shape when I was in charge of there. It's just one of those things where you almost have to start stockpiling some of your money, get some estimates on it, identify it as a project, and, and again, I know that schools have been coming to the board for some matching money, it's not necessarily matching.
Lincoln had that large project, so they probably depleted, they probably have depleted their funds.
And you're in a couple hundred thousand for resurfacing, I think, for it.
Yes, and, and since you brought that up, I think that as we look forward, and we identify all the things that need to be completed at our schools, you know, when it comes to this, one is the cost of the overhead is, is, went up a bit. So you talk about these, these fields that are turf, to get those re, we really need to develop a plan that tracks that need resurfaced, we really need to develop a long-term plan on how we're going to work with the schools to get that accomplished, because they're not going to be able to, if they do one large project, then it's going to take them 30 years to save their money.
We've always told the schools, when they did turf, that they had to set aside a portion of their levy funds every year, because the, the life is nine, 10 years, and then they're going to have to put a million dollars into it, and I don't know if that's happening, that's the issue, I don't know that you could go to any school with turf and ask them how much they have put aside for the next turf job, they'd probably tell you not.
I think Bird does, I think Bird has a separate line item for their turf.
Because you're, you know...
They've been doing that as they...
And, and to be honest with you, the 60,000 that we get, and that's each high school gets that through 11, thank goodness, $60,000 doesn't go as far as you stood. And so, when you're doing those large projects, that the schools are trying to manage their money, I know sometimes you'll see a lot of money in their accounts, and, and the reason is they usually are trying to save that for a large project, I think Lincoln did a filled house, Bridgeport did an upgrade to their press box, so...
They just, did they finish their bleachers, did they, Bridgeport High's bleachers? They were waiting till after the season.
That, that hasn't started yet, probably was started in the summer.
I know they were waiting till after the season or something.
But just like, I know that, there's just multiple facility things that we get, and the cost of, it just, for example, to, to replace a set of high school bleachers in a gymnasium, it's just, the cost is unbelievable. I mean, we got an estimate at Bird, it's, it's close to, it's close to, it's over half a million dollars.
Which is about double.
And the price is going up as well.
Yeah, it's doubled now.
Well, that, that'll just lead me into the finance portion, we'll talk a little bit, I've had a couple conversations with Whitney, the new finance person, which she'll be starting on Monday, we've already scheduled department head meetings for Tuesday, Wednesday, to be looking at budgets, and I've had a conversation with her, and she will be establishing a capital projects fund, which I don't know that we've had one specifically for facilities and capital projects. One of our first meetings will be with Danny and Mr. Lopez on Tuesday, and that's what we'll be talking about, that's, Danny called me about the paving project, and, so I told him, I said, bring all that to this meeting, because she wants to sit down and see what our needs are, she wants a good overview of what the county needs are facility-wise, and then she's going to be digging into the budget, and she said she will have a fund, and you will see that fund and, and what monies we will have to do that, so, she's got a good idea, they've done quite a bit of building work in Wood County, so I think she has a good idea for that, so, but we've scheduled all the department heads Tuesday and Wednesday to meet with her already, so she'll start on Monday, and we'll have meetings Tuesday, Wednesday, and start looking at the budget, and see what funding we do have for all these projects, because unlike Mr. Lopez, we need to, to work to get them done, they need to be scheduled and get them done. Mr. Snyder's bringing in the projects for the secure entrances, because that's a priority, we need to get the buildings done that we know are going to remain open, we need those secure entrances for those, so...
And we're going to try to do that, we're going to do those in-house.
Right.
For these, for South Harrison, which should save us a lot of money, too.
Right, that's another thing, I mean, Danny's really been able to support, so, so a lot of, a lot of things happening, she's going to hit the ground running, so, also, in your packets, I believe we put in there, this is related to finance, Mr. Devano had five or six questions the last time about the financials, so I met with the CFO of Greenbrier, he was here, and we went through that, and he has provided answers, so, Mr. Devano, I'll get you those, we just went in and typed out his answers, he looked at that. We also were trying to locate, you had asked about the well revenue on our properties?
Yes.
He believes that that money has been deposited as those checks come in, into the general fund, so it's going to take a little bit of time to go back and dissect exactly how much money's come in, because it's just a positive as a, you know, just as a positive in our general fund, but we can find that, I've already talked to Whitney about that, and she will delineate that from now on, and we will, we're putting together a monthly financial, that, once she gets here, and we get through this budget, that you'll get every month, so it'll delineate all those things in a line item, which I think we'll appreciate to see that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, I believe she talked to you about how she does her financials, and I don't think we will have to, as we have for the last 10 years, guess what a check is for.
No.
Or ask them, we shouldn't have to ask them in a meeting, what's this for, and then, well, I'll have to get back to you, I think, from talking to her.
Do you have the opportunity to go on to Wood County's, any of their board meetings, they also use board docs and eTreat, so she's familiar with all of that, she had me go on and just see the things that she posts for the board members, and, so if you have the opportunity to go check out their website, that's what you will be seeing here, and it is, I'm impressed by that, and I'll be anxious to see, because she will be providing that every month for us. There was also at the last meeting, somebody asked about a $40,000 payment, and I can't remember which one asked, it was on the vendor accounts, it was for, it was an energy project payment is what that was.
Q's.
Yeah, Q's app payment for those ESD projects.
48,000.
Yeah, yeah, 48,000, so, I went back and looked, that's what that was, it was for a loan payment for ESD projects that we've had in the past.
And I think from now on, it will say, out from that, what it's for.
We also have our levy rates, they, if you saw those in the paper, we got those published and put out to the public, on the 20, or on the 18th meeting is when we'll reconvene and accept those levy rates, I'm waiting for a letter from the auditor, I had to send those to the auditor's office in the department event, so we've met all those deadlines, and it looks like our audit will be completed here shortly, from Tetrick and Bartlett, there were a few things with that, and they've been in, and I've worked with Mary Police a couple days, and we've been able to get her what she needs, so I think we're, when Ms. Kind starts, I think she's going to be in a pretty good place, when she comes in, and her focus will be our budget. We've got a budget deadline, it has to be to the state by the 31st of May, so she's finishing Wood County's budget, and so she will come in, and that's what will be the focus for the first few weeks, and so, I'm pleased, and we'll be meeting with the department heads on that.
I was going to say, at least you gave her money to get ready for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
That's right. The other piece was personnel, went fairly smoothly, Ms. Leesburg delivered letters, and I don't believe we have any hearing requests, so, that usually is a delivery if you don't have a, have a hearing request, so, appreciate that. I think that's it, other than, we are bringing in, and I believe the board will get the legislative updates at, that you're next, at our next meeting, for the board, usually, it'll be part of that, right?
At the recent meeting, that's what...
At that meeting, because I was, is it on there? Because I was going to schedule, there's a lot of things that the governor has now signed that will affect our school system, and we're just now learning the details of that, so I have Jacob Manning and Jason Wong will be presenting to the principals, it's a two-hour session on just the legislative update.
And they're going two hours in one.
Yeah, so I didn't want to duplicate that, you guys are welcome to come, it's on the 28th, if you want to come sit and hear that one from the principals, it's from noon to 2 on April 28th, it was the only time they had available, they've got a lot of counties asking for that, to clarify what's in the noon, we were waiting for the governor to sign things, and he finally has, so now it's going to, a lot of things need to go into effect for our next school year, so we wanted to get that done. I think that's all I have, anybody else have anything for updates? All right, thank you.
All right, what's that?
One thing, you did talk about budget, if there was anything we would request, should we turn that in to you?
You can, you've given me a few things, if there's anything on the budget, we have that meeting on the 18th, it's a work session, so anything that you guys would like to see, we can give it to her then, or you can email me if there's something that you'd like to see in the budget.
This is vapes, I mentioned about that.
Yeah, vape sensors, we can, that's really, will be a priority.
Defibrillators and vapes.
We haven't heard anything about that money yet, we just sent in the...
And that's what I'm saying, worst-case scenario, I would go ahead and do that, and then use that money to backfill when it come, you know, if, if, even though that's not coming, we need to put some money in for vapes, for vape detectors, and, and possible, I, I found out that we have more defibrillators than I had originally anticipated, so...
There is one more thing, this was exciting, this was probably the biggest news. We, we were one of the few, one of the only county, the only county in West Virginia, back in September, there was an opportunity for mental health support, and I can't find my folder, and I, I think that maybe Joe Manchin alluded to it on TV, we're thinking it's gotten out there, but we had not been notified officially, we applied for a grant through WVU, and it's, it's the, it's a federal grant, it's through the US Department of Education, and it is for, it's called the Mountaineer School-Based Mental Health Fellows Program, and we applied back in September, and at the time, when we were looking at the information for that, we didn't really put it out there, because we thought the chances are probably slim that we'll get that, so we didn't really advertise it, well, we were notified last week that we received this grant, it's five years, it is five, they're interns, they're in their last year, from the counseling department at WVU, it's in conjunction with them, they will be working with us, it's five years of five counselors, fully funded, that we can place in our schools for, for a year. We thought it was three years, but I got the money, and it's actually for five years, and they'll be working with us to place this, it's 25 different fellows, so they'll, so there'll be 25 students that'll be moving through our school system in the next five years, providing mental health support. Now, it is based on some low SES economics of the school, a low-performing school, so we'll be looking at where those schools will go, there were already some identified early on, and we're not sure what they are yet, so...
Now, will they only be in, a school, permanent in one school, or...
That's a good question, because it came up, can you, like, next year, we put five in, can we do five different schools the next year? I don't know, that's a question we have, or would we keep them?
Could they be in one school three days a week, and another feeder school that's right there with them?
I believe they're assigned to a building, because they want that student to get embedded in that building.
Do you have input on how they'll be used, the counselors, or?
I'm sure, I mean, we'll be working with, it's like any counselor, it would come in into an internship, there are different, there's two different routes, there are community-based counselors as well, so WVU can supply, it could be a community-based counselor, depending on what students they have that year, so we may have a mix of school counselor or community-based counselor, but the idea that we're getting five positions, I know they'll be students, but still, they're in that fifth year, and we get those...
And then also, as we have people retire, it's...
Fresh knowledge.
Right.
Because they're, they're not easy to come by anymore, so if you get them in there, they're much more apt to stay in a position.
We do have several CTRs this time that are doing quite well, that are placed in the county, and I'm hearing some good things for counselors, so, but that was exciting, we just don't know enough about it yet, this is just all about the finance piece of it, but that original grant, so that's from work back in September, so, just happy to hear that.
I think you want to have one stationed in this board group, before the meetings.
Before and after?
Yeah.
We just sent him to your house.
That's part of the psychology, right.
Was that a million, was it a million dollar grant, is what it was?
Oh, it's more than a million. It was 717,000 the first year, a million 31,000, a million 63,000, it's well over $5 million that we will be receiving. Now, I do believe the money funnels through WVU, that's what we're trying to figure out, who's the fiscal agent for the grant, and it looks like it's WVU, which is not even bad either.
They do the, they do the paperwork, yeah.
We'll appreciate that, probably.
They do a lot less work.
But that was great news.
All right, they did.
Yes.
All right, brings us down to approval of consent items, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we approve consent items.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Aye.
Bus driver promissory note, you're there and you see, those are standard, we, we do a lot of these now, so we must have some bus drivers.
Well, we'll, yeah.
Well, we'll, yeah. I don't want to be too long.
We had one retirement, right? We just had one retirement, or-
What I'm doing is, I'm seeing more promissory than it's the retirements.
Yes.
So as long as, as long as that keeps happening.
We just have so many that are closed now.
But it's a fine line.
Last minute.
It's a fine line, you want, you want enough, but you don't want so many that they never get a job, so.
They come in and they say, well, I just wanted to know I'm gonna retire, you know, I'm sure back here, but I try to be very thankful that they came in and congratulate them.
Yeah. Alright, uh, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I make the motion, we accept promissory.
That's, uh, been moved and then seconded by Mr. Devano, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Out-of-state travel study requests? Motion on that.
I make a motion, I'm permission to adjourn, yes, study study requests.
Set. Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, motion carries. Old business, we'll carry that over, uh, one more meeting, that's the fiscal year financials, because we kind of need her, or do we need to approve those? But we still have questions that need answered, so I thought, you know-
Do you have other questions about them?
I don't, but I don't know if any, but I, I hate, if someone has, if we wanna bring it to the table and, and approve it, but I don't know if anyone's ready to prove it, if they have questions to ask.
I don't know what about to ask you a question.
I think those financials were, I think Whitney has gone through our financials with, with David and with Chris the week, so she didn't have any concerns with them.
Right, but I guess, if she's here the next time, because we have the budget meeting, uh, she'll be here at, at our regular meeting.
Right.
If we bring it up that time, in case there's a question. I just hate to vote on anything, if someone has, and I'm sure people have questions, and it may not be a bunch, but I think if, if, I would just feel better, uh, yeah, so.
The last time I spoke with her, she said, I have a copy of your financials.
Yeah, that's fine, but, but since she'll be here, it would make more sense that we approve it on the night she's here, in case we have questions.
Very good.
If there's no objection, we'll leave it there, it's old business, one more meeting. Alright, we have no policy updates, uh, personnel matters. Is there a motion to accept the personnel matters?
I make a motion, we accept the personnel, uh, agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I, I would say, I should have, there, uh, I appreciate that we have made, went and made a move on these, as these people come forward and say, they just want to retire, that we didn't wait till the end of the year, now, you know, the people selected.
But what if Jill wanted to pull her?
Well, she, she had a team.
That's it, okay.
But this way here, just trying, somebody, they get a feel for, you know, get ready, hit the ground running, rather than have to wait.
And I think the outgoing principal probably prefers that there's, they know who's taking over, while they're still there to answer questions.
Some do, and some people just wanna wait clear through the summer, and just before school, and say, I'm gonna retire, and then, then you're in a real, so I, I think it's very admirable that, uh, everybody that's gonna retire administratively, not in advance, so, thank you.
We have the ayes. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries. So we have new principals in Bridgeport. Uh, brings us down to, uh, no legal disciplinary matters, board member comments, Mr. Tucker?
Just thank you all for being here, and the ones that are listening, I, as I always say, and, and the folks that were here.
I turned DeSantis in.
And, and my wife's listening, so. Get the covers, I'll take care of horses, I've got those one.
I was gonna say, we have our time, take care of the horses.
I'll take care of those. And, uh, please remember Friday through Sunday, and, uh, and really why we're celebrating even more than, uh, at Christmas time, everybody celebrates Christmas, that's great, let's remember Friday and Sunday.
Ms. Smith?
Um, Happy Easter everyone, and have a great week, and, um, have a great spring break. Sorry you guys had to come in.
Mr. Howard?
Well, I'd just like to thank you all for employees from the top to the bottom for, you know, the hard work that they put in, and, you know, kinda goes up and down through the year, but we're getting close to the end of the year, and there's a lot to finish out with, uh, testing and, and, you know, getting things done, and like I said, for us, looking at the school situations, you know, as the next few years, we gotta take, we gotta look ahead, can't look behind, and, uh, I just, I just think everybody, you know, we don't always have to agree, you know, but I, I think we can all work together, come to a happy medium, and, uh, you know, keep our, our system on the right track, headed where it's going. I, I read in the paper some of the, or here on the news, some of the other counties and how they're so overly populated with personnel, and they're trying to, uh, make moves to save everybody's job, which is, which is good, and I think we have to look at that as we, we go forward in the next year or two, and go from there, so. But, uh, like Mr. Tucker, I hope everybody has a great holiday, Thursday, you know, everybody gotta get warmed up on Thursday, you know, to get into the holiday, so.
Mr. Devano? Mr. Devano?
Yeah, I, yes, one thing real quick, um, thank you for the personnel, uh, Sammy, I think that's great, but this is, uh, as long as I've been on the board, we have not had to rip any positions, we've not had to cut anybody, um, without a job, I think that's, that's impressive, over the past, uh, eight years that I've been on the board, and I think that Sammy did a great job this year, and I want to congratulate her on that.
Alright.
That's all.
And the only thing I have is, is when we talk about school systems, and every school system, everyone's so divided, uh, with everything these days, and then even in school system, if you do something, you think you're doing something great, and then someone's always opposed to it. But, uh, since I've been on the board, the one thing that no one ever seems opposed to is the healthy grandfamilies, and every time they come here, they're probably our best, uh, public relations, because everyone likes the healthy grandfamilies, they do a great job, and, and you just see people are always wanting to support it, to where they've got, really, as she almost said, they've got too much support, everyone is, because it's, it's so needed, but they do such a good job, and, and really, the healthy grandfamilies, uh, kind of happened organically, we started it, it just kind of runs itself, I don't think it takes a lot of resources from, uh, the county office, and it just kind of runs, and, and people know what program it is, and how many people that it's affected, so. Every time we see them coming, it's always, there's never anything negative with the healthy grandfamilies, just wanted to say that. With that, uh-
Can I, can I one thing? Uh, like I said, I got a lot of free time, and do a lot of reading and watching TV and all, and you listen out, and all over the state of West Virginia, a lot of counties are starting to lose their superintendents, either they're old enough to retire, or they come to a point that they're totally getting burnt out, and, you know-
Eighteen vacancies.
Okay, so out of fifty-five counties, eighteen vacancies, and I just think that, uh, we're very fortunate, I think we're very blessed, that, uh, Dora has, uh, stayed the course, and her job's not easy, and hopefully, you know, we'll continue the next few years when, you know, till her time, that, when she gets older, she's allowed to retire, you know, so, but, uh-
After every meeting, I think she says it's time to retire.
Yeah, but, you know, like I say, her job's not easy, you know, she normally has to take care of all the, all the care, all the kids, all the parents, all the staffs, uh, and, you know, and then board members like me, and also, it gets, uh, gets pretty tough, pretty weighted down, so thank you for the job that you do, you know.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Children in peace, go in peace.